I'd like to call the Wilson County Commission meeting, March 21st, 2022, to order. Welcome all of our guests here tonight and invite you back at any time that you can have an opportunity to be here. Tonight is my honor Commissioner Weathers has lined up two excellent gentlemen to come and provide our prayer and pledge, and I'll ask them to make their way this way. The first one would be Mr. Chuck Groover, retired minister of Victory Baptist Church, also assistant basketball coach to Chris Fryer for many years on the Lady Bears in Mount Juliette. And then to do our pledge tonight would be Colonel Retired U.S. Army, Mr. Bob Bailey. And thank you both for being here tonight. Please rise.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we are grateful that we have a safe place to come when we look around and see all the things that are taking place in our world. We feel for those who are finding themselves in harm's way, day by day, minute hour by hour. And tonight, we pray for Ukrainian people, people that share this world with us, people that have no concern for the political issues that have led to what's going on in their country, and yet they are paying the price. We pray, Father, for your blessing of comfort and protection. And now, Father, we pray for wisdom among our leaders, our national leaders, those who will interact with others around the world to try and bring some resolution to all that is taking place in a far and distant land. We thank you for these men and women who have dedicated themselves to serve our county that we call home, that we are blessed to call home, and we thank you for each of them, for those who serve us as employees of the county. And we ask your guidance and your direction, your protection over each of them and their families. We ask, Father, that they will have the wisdom to see into the future and to know how their decisions tonight will impact the future of generations to come. We thank you that together we are better than apart. And we pray for unity, we pray for a spirit of love and concern and compassion for one another. And, Father, we give you thanks tonight that we do have the blessing of calling this place home. And may we give our all to secure it for any and all who would come here and share it with us. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both, men. Thank you, Ms. Weathers, for getting those gentlemen to us tonight. You will press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Twenty-four present and one absent. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Patton.
Yes, in your packet, there are two minutes from the steering committee we met in regular session on Thursday, February the 28th, in the upstairs conference room, and again on March the 10th. Minutes are in your packet. I mean, they being received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Patton.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, Commissioner Patton.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
And we'll need to vote on that one, since it's concerning money. So if you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. Mr. Bernard. Commissioner Patton. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record. Twenty-four and one absent, resolution passes. There is no public hearing tonight, to my knowledge. Tom Zee enters the door on time. Special recognition, at this time, I will introduce Commissioner Costley and Commissioner Weathers. Yeah, get the Pyron family to come forward, please. Coach Mattingly.
I just like your daddy when he had hair. What are you doing, man? I'll make you look better.
Hey, we're here to honor our state champion wrestler from Mount Juliette High School tonight, Mr. Anthony Pyron. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Anthony Pyron for being an individual state champion in wrestling. Whereas Anthony Pyron of Mount Juliette High School has had an outstanding four-year career in high school wrestling. Whereas Anthony is the son of Ray and Laura J. Pyron, and followed in his father's footsteps as Ray was also a wrestler for Mount Juliette High School in the class of 1986. You're old, dude. Whereas during his time wrestling for Mount Juliette High School, he has qualified for the state tournament all four years. And whereas during his time wrestling for Mount Juliette High School, I went over that once, he qualified all four years. Whereas in the 2021 wrestling season, Anthony was district runner-up, regional runner-up, and had a state medalist third-place finish in the 170-pound weight class. Whereas in the 2122 wrestling season in Division One AA, Anthony was state champion of the 170-pound weight class, sectional champion, regional champion, and Franklin Invitational Champion. And whereas in the 2122 regular season, Anthony went 39-0, and whereas Anthony was 2022 Region Five A Wrestler of the Year. Whereas Anthony was selected to be one of 16 wrestlers for the 2022 Middle Tennessee Wrestling Coaches Association Dream Team, and whereas, when not wrestling, Anthony has been able to maintain a GPA of 3.35. Whereas Anthony Pyron, although set to graduate from Mount Juliette High School in May, does not plan to end his wrestling career there and hopes to continue in collegiate wrestling, but is currently undecided on where he will attend. And whereas Anthony had the support of the following coaches and leaders throughout his high school wrestling career, Coach Brad Mattingly, head coach, Alan Carver, assistant coach, Eric Aldridge, assistant coach, Justin Griffin, assistant coach, Mike Duncan, our athletic director, and Beverly Sharp, our principal. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Mount Juliette High School wrestler Anthony Pyron for his outstanding career wrestling for Mount Juliette High School, congratulate him on his many accomplishments, and offer our support and encouragement as he graduates from Mount Juliette High School.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A lot of people said I work too hard for this, and yeah, I know. They don't know how hard I work, or they do, but I worked harder than they thought, honestly. I woke up every morning way earlier than everyone else. I worked out before the football team, and I did it almost every day, because all I thought about was winning. My imagination has been short all because I've just been thinking about winning. I just wanted to win the state championship this year, and that's what I did. And I have bigger goals ahead of me. I take one step at a time, and now my next goal is Virginia Beach, and that's in a week, and that's a national tournament. And I want to win that one.
Just like to say that it goes without saying, a lot of days that when you're, you have the support of your family, which is, a lot of times nowadays, a lot of kids don't have that, but Anthony's family has supported him through everything that he has done and will continue to do, and I give them a lot of credit for everything that he's accomplished, because if it wasn't, without their leadership, it would be very difficult for him to be able to be where he is today. But I always give them the, give them recognition for everything that he's done and what they've done also.
Mr. Anthony, thank you for representing Mount Juliette High School and Wilson County statewide. On behalf of our commissioners, we appreciate what you do and all the work you put in. Thank you. This time, I have a proclamation I would like to read to you, if I could. Brooke Driver is really the person behind this proclamation tonight. Brooke, do you have, is any of our guests still here, or have they all gone back?
We do still have one family. We have Staff Sergeant Mason, his son Colton, and several members of the Masons.
Would you please rise and let us welcome you today? Thank you. Thank you, and you may be seated. This month is Month of Military Child, and as we talk about that, our commission is blessed with several veterans that we have here. Wilson County, I've always said, has loved veterans, and I think they showed that when they took a statement by Commissioner Ash, sheriff at the time, that said, "Let's build something in tribute," and you guys went all out. To my mind, I believe, what you created over there is probably second to none in the state. And tonight, today, this month, it was coming up, we talk about military families. We talk about what the child has to endure. We know the individual that serves. I never had the opportunity to serve and always felt less on those days, it just wasn't my time during that time to serve, but I've always honored the people that did sacrifice and serve, and tonight, truly honoring their families and their children. So I'm going to read this to you, and then I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ash. Whereas the month of April annually marks the month of military child, a time when Americans pay tribute to the resilience and steadfastness of our military children, and whereas military children make up a very special portion of our nation's population, with an estimated 2 million military children of active-duty members worldwide, and whereas the children of active-duty National Guard, Reserve, or veterans did not make the choice to serve, but instead stand in the unwavering support of their military parents. Whereas the average military family moves three times or more, often during their non-military family life, but through those moves and deployments, these brave children stand in support of their parents as they change schools and environments of where they're at. Whereas these children spend milestones and holidays apart from those they love most often, often celebrating with only a brief phone call or a virtual chat from their faraway parent. Whereas the month of military child is a time for Americans to show their appreciations for the commitment and the service of military children in shouldering these challenges, and we recognize these stressors on military children brought on by the unique demands of their parents' military lifestyle. Whereas our military children make daily sacrifices so their parents can keep our country safe, and through their support of the military parents, these children serve as well. Whereas we see their service, and we sincerely thank them for it, now therefore, I, Randall Hutto, Mayor of Wilson County, along with the Wilson County Commission, to hear plow became the month of April 2022 as Month of Military Child in Wilson County, Tennessee, to honor their unique contributions and sacrifices on behalf of our country and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthwhile observation.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, and Burke, for putting all that proclamation together and working on this. I rise tonight to do something a little different. Chuck, you mind coming back up here again, please? Many of us in this room have actually served in combat, and we've seen what happens in foreign countries, and the tragedy that's happening right now is just unsurmountable. Probably don't y'all, but it just keeps me up at night, just the truth. So as we honor these military children, these sons and daughters of veterans, I want to make a little special announcement. Now, you know, we kind of honor our athletes, and Anthony, I'm sorry I told your mother, "Are you sure you want to go upstairs?" Y'all came into parking lot. As we think about great politicians, it's a bad term, politicians look for the next election, statesmen look for the next generation, but we have people in our midst, astronauts and a lot of people have done a lot of things. So I want to put one up here tonight. And many of you don't know who that is, but that is the Deputy Ambassador of Ukraine, I mean, of Romania, the night he's under siege, taking in hundreds of thousands of refugees. He's the number-two man in Romania, in the United States Embassy, got 500 people working for him. He was the deputy sheriff of Wilson County for a long time, for me. Only employee ever had come in my office and say, "Sheriff, I need more to do." What people don't know about Shane Dixon is that's his mama sitting right there, Sonia Robinson. Most people don't know that, but Daddy knows it. And Sonia, kind of like my mother, raised two old raggedy boys by herself. But we are proud of you, proud of him.
Very.
And I've asked Chuck to come up and pray for you. Citizens of Ukraine, Romania, we thank you.
Let's pray. Please rise. Heavenly Father, so often, the greatest contributions to our world go unnoticed. And right here in our midst, we have one who is serving in a very challenging place, and we pray for Commissioner Robinson and her son and family, and for all that they are confronted with on a daily basis. And we thank you that tonight, we are able to call attention to the fact that those who have served us here in Wilson County have taken that service to the world. And tonight, we have one who is serving as an ambassador, representing all of us who were Americans, in an attempt to aid those who find themselves in situations beyond their control. Tonight, we recognize the family of those who serve in our military, and we thank you, Father, for those who do serve and give so much. But we also remember their families tonight and the tremendous sacrifices that they make. We ask for your blessings upon them, your protection, and we ask, Father, that in the midst of all that is happening around us, that we would soon see peace, peace in our world. You have told us that we should pray for the peace of our city, and tonight, we pray for the peace of our city, and we extend that prayer to the world, and we ask for your continued guidance for those who are working behind the scenes to bring about peace. And we thank you for the sacrifice and for the contribution that so often goes unnoticed, but we know that you are keeping a record of all that is done for the glory of your promise that we should love our neighbor as ourself. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I don't, I don't know if I can stand here and talk about this young man or not. Shane has been serving his country since he was 18-years-old. He's given his life to his country. And my mama, that has put him on a bus when he was 18-years-old and brought him to Lebanon when there was a bus, I put him on that bus and watched that bus take him away to join the Marine Corps at just 18-years-old, had just turned 18-years-old. He is a wonderful young man, but there's three things, three things that I taught my boys as growing up. One of them, that God will be beside you all the way, trust in Him, He will be there. Second was always do the right thing, be there but do the right thing. And the third was just be kind. And both of my boys have done that. They have all, they have both, both done that. And this young man has served his country, and he has done it well. And the thing that he says to me every time I tell him how proud, how proud I am of him, he says to me, "Everything that's the good in me, Mom, came from you." And I said, "No, it's all you, buddy. You did it all yourself." He said, "No, I did it all." He was a young man that was very determined. When he got out of the Marine Corps, he went to, Terry called and said, "Tell that boy to come see me when he gets out of the Marine Corps. I'll put him to work." He did. He went to see him. He worked nights and went to Tennessee Tech during the day. He got out of Tennessee Tech with two majors in three years. He was, he entered into the federal agency law enforcement, was 2006 Federal Agent of the Year, and he's done nothing but worked his way all the way up. But he's, "Am I a proud mama?" Yes, thank you. Thank you for this tonight. Thank you, guys, for recognizing. My boy, he's done nothing but give his soul to our country, and he's still serving, and he's still serving. And I don't, I don't get to see him a lot, but I talk to him every chance I get, but just please pray, pray for our country, because we need our, we need our country prayed for. Thank you.
Reports of the minutes committee, Commissioner Bishop.
I guess Tommy just hugged her for all of us. Minutes Committee met on February the 28th and again on March the 10th here at the courthouse. Both sets of minutes were in your packet, and we approved at our March 10th meeting the minutes that of last month's commission meeting. I'll make the motion, but nobody's going to make the motion, so usually y'all beat me to it, but since they didn't, I make a motion that this report be received and filed.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reading of the minutes?
Move, we spent the reading of the minutes.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tonight, we need to mention to you that Mr. Tracy Bond, to West Wilson Utility District, has been reappointed there by way of their board. No action to be taken there, and at this time, I would like to introduce another military servant, Dr. Paul Stumm, which wants to talk to you about the greatest university in the state of Tennessee or southeast region, Cumberland University.
Mayor. It's such a privilege to be with you all tonight, and I thank you for giving me just a few minutes of your time. I promise I'll be brief, but I wanted to come tonight and just say thank you for supporting your university. And I mean that. I mean, it's your university, and I want to explain just a little bit more about why I mean that, but first, I want to tell you, your university is growing. It's growing in a lot of ways. I personally have been growing because we have a great dining hall, and I eat in there often, and I invite you to come participate there, if nowhere else on campus. But we're continuing to grow in our enrollment. Our anticipation is that we'll have north of 3,000 students this coming fall, which will be a new record for us. That's my goal, and I think we'll make that. We're continuing to grow in our facilities. If you've been on our campus recently, we've acquired a lot of new properties. We're expanding our footprint. We're expanding the existing buildings that we have. We just put a new big addition on our dining hall this past year. We're continuing to revamp and improve our existing facilities. We have plans for a number of new facilities, some of which will be constructed this summer. So we're growing in enrollment, we're growing in facilities. We're also growing in new academic offerings. We're introducing three new undergraduate majors this fall. I know Commissioner Glover's looking at me saying, "When are we going to get that doctoral program?" He's anxious to get his doctorate at Cumberland, and we are working on that. We're expanding our graduate programs. I see several Cumberland alums over here, Commissioner Walker included, and...
I had dinner there tonight.
You had dinner there tonight? Was it good?
I met the freshman golfer all the way from India with a three handicap.
Yeah, I tell you, we got outstanding athletic teams, but I want you all to know that we're not only growing bigger, but the way we're growing bigger is that we're focused on getting better. And I don't know if you all remember the words of Truitt Cathy. Truitt Cathy, whom you will recall, was the founder and CEO of Chick-fil-A, and Truitt Cathy said, "If you focus on getting better, your customers will insist that you get bigger." And we really are focused on getting better. We have a mantra at Cumberland called A-B-C-I, A-B-C-I, and that stands for Assessment-Based Continuous Improvement. And we're focused on improving everything that we do on our campus. We assess all of our academic programs. We assess all of our athletic programs. We assess all of our library resources. We assess our faculty every year and our staff. By the way, we're continuing to grow our faculty and staff as well. We, last year, added 124 new employees, just last year. We're north of 500 employees now. We are continuing to grow, and our economic impact is reflecting that. And by the way, that's the economic impact on this community in which we all live. When I got this opportunity now, seven years ago, in 2015, I chartered an Independent Economic Impact Assessment of Cumberland University, and I hired another university. We have great economists at Cumberland, but I didn't think it would be, look just right for us to do that assessment of ourselves, so I hired the BERC, the Business Economic Resource Center, down at MTSU in Murfreesboro. And they came in, and in 2015, said that our annual economic impact on Wilson County... And they came in and in 2015 said that our annual economic impact on Wilson County was $56 million. I repeated that assessment just this last year. And in 2021, our annual economic impact is now north of $115 million each year on this community. That's because of those employees and it's because of those students. We have students this year from 65 of the 95 counties across our state. We have students from 39 of the 50 United States, and we have students from 41 countries this year on our campus. We have students from Ukraine on our campus. We have students from all over the world. And they're making a difference in this community, and they're gonna go on to make a difference in the world, armed with a new credential earned at Cumberland University. By the way, I want you to know a lot of our employees, a lot of those new 124 and a lot of our 500-plus now employees come from other counties. They come from Nashville, Davidson County. They come from Smith, DeKalb, Trousedale, Macon, Sumner, Rutherford. They come from all the surrounding counties. And they come here to work and spend their money, and we don't have to educate their children. They buy their gas here. They buy their food here at the restaurants. They, for those of it, unlike me, who need haircuts, they buy haircuts here. They're spending their money in our county. I wanna, I wanna close, and I told the mayor I wouldn't take but just a couple of minutes. I'll, I'll be brief, I promise, Mayor. But I want to ask you all a question. I want to ask, who, who owns Cumberland University? We don't, we don't have shareholders like a regular corporation. We have a board of trustees, but they don't own the university. The owners of Cumberland University are you all and the people you represent. We are owned by this community. If we were to go bankrupt, and by the way, I want to promise you, we're not. We're doing really well financially. We're, we're doing better financially today than probably ever in our 180-year history. And I'm not saying that to pat myself on the back. We've got a great team, but we're just doing well. And one of the reasons we're doing well is because of this great community that you all have positioned for us. We can thrive in this community because of what you all are doing to make this such a wonderful place to live and work and play. And I'm thankful for that every single day. But I want you to know that we're continuing to grow. We're continuing to get better. And that you all, you and your citizens, are the owners of Cumberland University. And I want to invite you to come and enjoy what you own. I want you to come to our campus. I want you to come out for a sporting event. We have had, I wish I had, was his name Anthony, that young wrestler that was here? I'm gonna, I want to talk to him because we have a great wrestling program at Cumberland. I want him to come to Cumberland University. But we have, we have 22 varsity sports. And we have, we have athletic events on our campus almost every single day. Last weekend, we won three home games in baseball against Campbellsville University, and they're outstanding. And in the last game, we were down by eight runs and came back and scored nine runs in the last inning and, and beat them. We have, we have outstanding athletic events every single day this week on our campus and many other weeks. I want you to come out to our athletic event. I want you to come to our fine arts events. We have, we have art shows. We have theater productions. We have musical events. We have all kinds of productions, fine arts on our campus. I want you to come to Symphony on the Lawn this summer. I want you to come to, I would say I want you to come to Phoenix Ball, but it's sold out. Now, I'll tell you, if any county commissioner needs a ticket, I'll find you one. But it is sold out, and that's a good thing. But I want you to come and enjoy the resources available at your university. And I'm gonna sit down now, but I want, in closing, just say, if I personally, or if Cumberland University can do anything to be supportive of you, then I hope you'll call me because I want to do that. And I don't want you to be a stranger on our campus. Thank you for what you do in support of your university.
Dr. Stumm? I'm just glad that you got rid of that former baseball coach so you can win some baseball games. Same last name. This time, we'll ask Mr. Ray Render to come forward and talk about Walk Across Wilson. And on his way up here, Commissioner Vanata?
Yes, one thing that Dr. Stumm did not tell you, if you want a lot of laughs, there's a roast coming up, and he's going to be roasting. So make sure you get a ticket and go. It's gonna be at the Capitol Theater, and I cannot wait to hear the stories about Dr. Stumm.
And normally, when Commissioner Vanata does that, she has tickets, so I'm not for sure she has any tonight, but, but Dan Walker has some. And Commissioner Stafford?
I just want to let Dr. Stumm know that my daughter is a graduate of Cumberland University as well. And she's also been nominated as a distinguished alumni of Cumberland University. Proud, whether she gets it or not, I'm just a proud mama that she was nominated.
Thank you again, Dr. Stumm, for being with us tonight. And before we turn it over to Mr. Ray Render, I want to introduce Commissioner Glover. He had some special guests here tonight that I left out at the very beginning of.
I just want to say thank you for Dr. Paul Stumm. He invited me to the MBA program, and he was the dean of the business school over there. Enjoyed many classes with him, debating and talking about very interesting business topics there, so thank you for that.
Mr. Glover?
Funget, Mr. Legman, Lebanon High School, and also the four students that are here today, go ahead and stand up. And introduce us, Mr. Legman on the far left, Bryson Glover, my son, next, Emma Fung, Abby McLean, and Savannah Stubblefield. They're part of the job shadow class at Lebanon High School. And they went to Lebanon City Council, what, last month? So they're here tonight, and they're serving in government relations across our county, kind of seeing what, kind of what we do in law enforcement and different things like that. Welcome to County Commission.
Thank you for being here. All yours.
I have got to follow President Paul Stumm. Oh, my goodness. I get on Coleman, I tell everybody, the most intelligent, best dressed, smartest man in the county, right there. So when I grow up, I'm gonna be this guy right there. Thank you, President Stumm, for everything you do. Ladies and gentlemen, I will also try to be quick. I laid on your table. It's that time again. It's time for Walk Across Wilson County. Think I was here a couple of years ago, maybe even last year, but COVID's kind of had us a little down. We walked two years ago. I know several of y'all did that. I know Commissioner Patton, you had a lot of folks. Rick was out there. I see so many faces, I'm gonna start naming names. Justin, you were there. Lot of faces. I'm gonna forget folks if I start naming names. However, it's time for that again. So this Saturday morning, okay, it's not on your paper, so make a note of it, please. This Saturday morning, we're gonna have a kickoff event, okay? So dignitaries in town, that's you folks, okay? Folks back here, President Stumm, if you'd like to join us. So nine o'clock, we're gonna have a walk. Our kickoff walk is going to be in each of the municipalities, okay? So in Mount Juliet, we're gonna meet at the train station at nine o'clock. That's this Saturday morning, the 26th. If you'd like to walk with us, we're gonna walk about a mile up and a mile back. Shouldn't take very long, probably 30 or so minutes. We've got the newspapers coming. We'll take photos. So I think it's an election year, so I know every, anyway. No, regardless of that, we would love to have you with us, so that's the Mount Juliet piece. If you'd rather come to the Lebanon piece, we're gonna start at Wilson Bank and Trust, their main office. We'll use the parking lot away from their, their office because they'll be open that day. So we'll start there. Once again, probably walk down to Ruby Tuesday and back, something like that. Once again, 30 or so minutes. You can do that in Lebanon if you live near there. Watertown, so Commissioner Patton, we're gonna lean on you and Chuck Whitlock to help us out down in Watertown. We'll start right there at the middle school in Watertown. Once again, probably walk about a mile and back. So that's the kickoff event for this Saturday morning at nine o'clock. Would love to have any of y'all that can join us. The more folks, the better. So jot that down. That's not on there. The kickoff event, nine o'clock this Saturday morning, the 26th. Walk Across Wilson starts the next morning, the 27th. Okay, so the official Walk Across Wilson is the 27th. It's gonna run for four weeks, so that is on this piece of paper. Got a QR code you can click on there. It'll take you to our Facebook page at Walk Across Wilson. There'll be a lot of information loaded on there Sunday morning when you can actually register. I know Mr. Chuck Whitlock and also our friends at LSSD, they have all of the schools are loaded in there already. So, you know, what is Walk Across Wilson? What's, you know, who's gonna benefit from this? Really, our schools and the kids that participate in the schools are gonna help with that. So everybody that participates, kids in schools, I'll start with them first, okay? So got some back here. $5 per participant will go to that school, okay? I know Kohl's Ferry in the past has really taken advantage of that. Five, six, $700 a year they're earning on this program. Doesn't cost anything to participate, okay? It's free for kids to participate. It's free for adults to participate. So we want everybody to sign up for this. And so Walk Across Wilson, where did that, okay, so how that came to be, this is our seventh year. So if you do a roughly 30 minutes of activity, okay? You don't have to walk. You can do any activity during this program. So 30 minutes of activity, we say that's walking about a mile and a half a day. If you did that for six days a week during the, the length of this program, you will have traversed 36 miles, which would take you across Wilson County, which we all did that two years ago, those of y'all that, that joined us. I know Jackie said she walked like nine miles or something two years ago. So anyway, but if you do that program, you will have walked across Wilson County. Really, we want you to just participate. Do something. Do some activity. It's to get everybody out doing some activity. So once again, the schools, it's gonna be a Google Docs, Google Docs type thing. When you hit the QR code, you'll go to our Facebook page. From there, you'll go to the Google Docs page. That'll be live on Sunday. All right, so you can go on there, just exercise 20 minutes, 30 minutes. We're looking for participation, okay? We're not the, the time police or anything like that. We just want you to participate in the program. If you have a civic organization, so Pastor Chuck, Bob, Dan, I've signed us up for Mount Juliet Breakfast Rotary already, okay? So I know Rick walks his dog 30 minutes a day right here. So, okay, there's, there's five bucks for whoever we at Breakfast Rotary tomorrow, I'm gonna mention it to us. Let's, all we have to do, any organization that wants to participate, bank, church, civic club, if you want to participate, once again, it's free. But for everyone that participates, you're gonna be able to donate $5 per participant to the nonprofit of your choice. Okay, so I'm making this up, guys, for Mount Juliet. Say, we're gonna give it to Mount Juliet Help Center. I'm just, I'm making that up. Hey, if, you know, there's 30 or 40 or 50 of us that walk, times $5, that money's gonna go to Mount Juliet Help Center if we choose. That, that's where it goes. That's an example, folks. But we want you adults to have your club, your organization, whatever, your workplace, get involved and participate in this. So one, I, I know y'all would much rather hear from Tracy Pope than me. She was gonna try to be here but couldn't. So Wilson Vanderbilt, I'm sorry, Vanderbilt-Wilson Hospital, they're the big supporter of that again this year. So we want to thank them. That's why you see their name there. We are looking for any supporters and sponsors. So if you, you or your organization would like to do that, we do have anything as low as $100 all the way up to $1,000 if you would like to be a sponsor. We're gonna make T-shirts, so your name will be on the T-shirts. All the participants get a T-shirt. This year again, we're going back to T-shirts now that COVID's out of the way. So, and then we'll also be advertising if you choose to sponsor your organization on our Walk Across Wilson Facebook page. So anyway, sorry I took a couple of minutes. Mayor, if you have any questions or anybody, please, y'all, I think most of y'all know how to find me. So on behalf of the Wilson County Health Council, thank you, and we'll see you Saturday morning. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Goodall, any additions to be added to the list? Are you motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Next on our agenda is the election of the county attorney, and so the floor is now open for nominations. Commissioner Stafford? Thought I had your name up here. My bad.
You love me that much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Floor is open for nominations for county attorney. Commissioner Walker?
I nominate County Attorney Mike Jennings for another term.
Any other nominations? Motion to cease nomination? Second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Mayor Jennings, would you accept the nomination?
Yeah, I just want to, my own, I just want to say thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure working over 32 and a half years with a lot of different county commissioners, and I look forward to two more, Lord willing. So I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Walker?
I just want to add that when your time comes up next time, we'll reconsider, but you might want to change sports teams you support.
I'll let you know. I'm a graduate of Cumberland College, and they got a real good athletic program over there tonight, I heard.
Judicial Commissioners, I will turn the floor over now to Commissioner William Glover.
Okay, Lisa's coming up to the podium. We have three that we're gonna nominate. We're gonna do each one of, one of them individually. Also, we've been up here quite a bit. The problem is, it's kind of like all the other departments and all the other businesses across the United States, is that by the time it gets through the process and you offer them a position, they either have already selected another position, making more money, or something like that. And so it takes a little while. Hopefully, we can get these three in, get them trained, and get them to work.
Thank you. Happy spring, everybody. It's March 21st. Just in follow-up to what Mr. Glover said, my department is a little bit different than any other department in the county because by statute judicial commissioners have to come before this body for your blessing before we can even offer those positions to the candidates. So that's why you see me pretty frequently these days, and I appreciate your patience. Thank you. Tonight, we have three candidates for part-time judicial commissioners to serve for a term of one year. The first lady that we have interviewed a couple of times was actually a finalist during our last round of hires. And consequently, let me say, during our last round of hires, I brought before you two individuals in January for part-time positions. And when we did get to the offer process or the offer part of the process, one of the gentlemen unfortunately had gotten a very serious medical diagnosis, and he was unable to take that position. So the first candidate is a lady named Betty Reed. She is a Mount Juliet resident, and she was a finalist during that first round. She has her Realtors license. She's a silent partner and a business owner of a boutique with her daughter in Mount Juliet. It's a women's clothing boutique. She attended Nashville Tech College. And when we interviewed her, she was very personable. She seemed to be very dependable. She, she presented with a very strong attention to detail when Felicia and I both spoke to her. She expressed an interest in becoming a judicial commissioner, first as part-time and then eventually, hopefully, as a full-time commissioner. She, she seems like an individual that is invested in looking for a position to, to move on and as a career person. And we're hopeful for that. So I would ask that you consider her, consider your vote for her for a part-time judicial commissioner.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Continue.
Thank you. The second candidate that I would like you to consider tonight is a gentleman named James Mars. He is also a Mount Juliet resident, and he works full-time for the state of Tennessee at the Board of Medical Examiners. He was originally from Illinois, where he worked as a police officer there for approximately 10 years. And he also had experience as a flight communication specialist working with EMS in air transports. Mr. Mars, at his interview, presented very well, and he had a very clear understanding of what we do every day in the judicial commissioner's office. And he seemed very academic in his answers related to the, the position. He presented with a very professional appearance, and coupled with his background and experience, I think he would be an ideal candidate for a judicial commissioner. I would ask that you consider him for your vote to offer a position.
Got a motion to second. Now discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed?
And our third and final candidate is a lifelong resident of Lebanon, and he may be familiar to some of you. His name is Randy Carson. He served as an EMT firefighter with WEMA here for approximately 16 years. He also worked for Lebanon Police Department as a codes enforcement officer. He expressed an interest, as, as did Ms. Reed, in moving into a full-time position eventually should one become available. In the interview, he presented very knowledgeable with TCAs. He also holds a real estate license. He is married. His wife is a principal in the area. And I would like to just stress that all candidates for these part-time positions were advised that the positions are night and weekend positions. So our goal is to have our full-time people on permanent shifts with permanent days off. So we're gonna keep working towards that end.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Report from the Merchant Management Committee, Commissioner Glover?
Merchant Management met on Tuesday, February 22nd at 5:30 in the County Commission Room. If these minutes be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Merchant Management Director Report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commission. In your packet, basically, are activities for this month. Still working on pandemic recovery, tornado recovery through Recover Wilson and FEMA. Been working with Drug Free Wilco. Our contingency plan is still active. Vacancies are 26 with long-term outages at 6. Vacancies are 26, with long-term outages at 6. I do want to say thank you for the 10% that was done for the EMTs and medics. I can report that that has kept and retained quite a few people. Even though it's not at the top level, you know, that we're looking at, it has made a big difference. We are receiving applications and reviewing those at this time. I do want to make note that with the increase in fuel prices, we were spending $7,000 to $8,000 a month, and that has increased to $15,000 to $16,000 a month. So I may be coming to you or looking at ways. We're probably looking at the last month of having to add to that line. So I just wanted to throw that out there at this time. Outside of that, that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Got a motion to second. Now Commissioner Glover?
Just going to, you give everybody an update on the train derailment. I know that the advisor, the hazmat went out and responded to it. Luckily, we were extremely lucky as far as the tank was pretty much empty and...
Right, yeah. They had been working on the railroad, working on the railroad. But the train was advised to go on through, and the lower section of the rails were not finished yet. So when it went across, the lower level just gave way, and they lost 15 cars. Basically, they just turned over. So most of those were all rock hoppers. They did have one propane tank, and it was empty. Of course, it probably had residue in it and all that, but non-leaking, so it was non-hazardous. But it was right behind Mount Juliet Elementary. So they were sheltered in place along with some homes that were around there. And I think eventually, they did evacuate to another school. But after reconning it, there was no hazards there from the incident. But yes, it could have been a major thing, so.
Commissioner Robinson?
I'd just like to thank you, Director Cooper, for help supporting me. As always, I called you the first of last week, and by Wednesday, Marty was out there. And absolutely, and it'll be being done this week. So as always, I appreciate your support and always being very supportive of me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from the Law Enforcement Committee. Commissioner Rich?
The Law Enforcement Committee met on March 8th at the Criminal Justice Center Sheriff's Office. Minutes in your packet. I make a motion, they'll be received and filed.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Sheriff Bryan, the sheriff's report.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your report's in your packet. Some of the numbers that stand out is calls for service. They're on the rise there, as you see. Traffic enforcement, again, it's up there. We'll continue to try to slow people down as much as we can. Again, the highest daily population in the jail is 454. Our capacity is 460. So a few of them days was real close. One number I really want you to look at is the number of people that's going into courts each month. That number really sticks out. Just up there at our building, the Criminal Justice Complex, it was at 10, over 10,000. And so that tells me the court system is open, back up and sending people. So it's, they're staying busy every day. Your roads are being worked every day. Please call us before the road commission gets out there with their tractors and spreads that stuff all over the place, please. We'll do our best to get it picked up. It's a whole lot easier picking it up intact than shredded to pieces. School resource officers staying busy. Couple of things. Joey, Director Cooper, this working on railroad thing bothered me. It really got to me. I won't be able to sleep tonight. What Director Cooper said about gas prices, and we are seeing the same increase. Our total mileage has not gone up. Miles driven have not gone up. Y'all are paying gas for gas, just like we are, and it's increases. But we're seeing it all across the board as it relates to food and the jail. We've seen it go up a big percentage, and we're having to deal with that in some of the resolutions in your packets you'll see tonight. And it's just where we're at today. And we'll continue to do our best to, you know, conserve all we can, and we always will. But that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Mr. Robinson?
There is some incidents that are going on in our county with some juveniles. And I have called on Sheriff Bryan numerous times to set up a meeting with some folks that we need to learn about this and know more about this. And he's done a tremendous job of helping me and working. You might want to enlighten a little bit to let them know what's going on with you and what you're doing and don't know if you're not told.
Commissioner Robinson, you're number one in my book, okay?
You what?
You're number one in my book.
Oh, thank you.
For just what I saw earlier. It's, we're praying for you.
Thank you.
What she's talking about is, we've got a juvenile facility. Commissioner Ash knows well what I'm talking about. He's dealt with it in the past, and I'm dealing with it now. They're run by private companies, and they're out of control. And we're working with the state. And we had a deal, an ordeal this weekend of a youth facility in Nashville that ain't even in this county. Same type of thing happened. These people run away, and they're not reporting it. We found out about this deal in Nashville after the people wrecked on Beckwith Road, but run through a house. So we're working with the state. I got a meeting with them next week. But they are in y'all's districts, okay? If you don't know it, they're in your districts. And we've had problems with this one particular one since I've been sheriff, and Commissioner Ash has had problems with that when he was sheriff. But they change hands like we change socks, I reckon. Maybe they don't change socks, I don't know. But they change yearly. And it's hard to, once you get associated with one, they're going out the door and you got to deal with somebody else. So we're dealing with it. We're going to do the best we can. But there's some stuff going on out in y'all's districts that it really worries me. It really bothers me. And we're going to try to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you for your support and all you're doing.
Commissioner Vanatta?
Yes, I received an email today, Sheriff, and complimenting you and your team for helping out with the traffic problems on Palmer Road. So thank you so much for that. They said they'd had, seen several tickets issued.
It's my team, okay, Commissioner Vanatta, and it's, they're out there working every day. And they're putting their lives on the line to stop them cars. Two cars about hit on the interstate this morning. And it's just, it's dangerous. So thank you.
Mr. Stafford?
You hit on something a few minutes ago, and I had asked Commissioner Glover here, but you, please help me. You said something about the gas. Do we buy gas by the tanks? Or do we have a contract? How do we buy our gas? I never thought about that.
We're on a state contract through the state. And it's bid every day.
Okay, so do we go to a service station?
Yes. It's a fleet, it's a fleet-type system where we, it's only certain service stations across the county take it. But it's a fleet management system. It's a card.
Okay. So I didn't know if we had our own underground tanks?
At one point, we did. Years, and how long? It's been a while. It's been long. Yeah, it's been 20 years. And it's just, we had problems with water in the tank and keeping up. And it's, the fleet system, the same thing the state's on. They use it every day.
I didn't know if it was cheap.
But it's bid every day. It's bid daily.
So it's cheaper, really, to go through the state, I guess.
What you say, what you say, what you say on the sign is not what we're paying.
Okay.
Okay, it's a state, it's a state thing.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee. Commissioner Stafford?
Mr. Chair, fellow commissioner, Education Committee met Monday, it says February 28th at 5:30 in upstairs conference room. I move these minutes be received and filed as printed.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools, report.
Mr. Luttrell, or Director Luttrell is at a conference this week, so y'all have me. Want to hit a couple of things, a couple of high points from his director's report. Our enrollment is still up. We're up still over 1,100 kids from last year. We're holding right steady at 19,900 students, give or take. We're up over 61 new students since February, so we continue to rise there. We have named two new principals. One at LZ Patton, Dr. Mary Holland, and one at West Wilson Middle School, Dr. Deontay Alexander. So we're excited about them. If you see them, say hi. Our board did approve West Wilson Middle School plans, so we plan to go out to bid for that school in the next two weeks. So hopefully, hopefully, we can get that ball moving forward. Stoner Creek, if you have been by there, if you haven't got a chance, do go by there. Brick should start this week, so we're really excited about that. The roof, roof is going on part of that building as well as we speak. And then a little update on our new funding formula. Director Luttrell is at a conference this week hoping to get some updated information on that. We'll bring that to you as part of the budget cycle, hopefully, depending on how that bill does in committee. I do want to echo what the sheriff's office said, and WEMA said that our gas fuel prices are going up quite considerably. We've had to raise the field trip rate in the past week, so we're working through that. You will see a budget amendment next month for that, and our food costs have went up almost $1 million this year. You know, just to put numbers to that. So with that said, any questions?
Are you a motion?
Motion.
A second. Commissioner Brees?
Do you have any updates about the FEMA dollars that we're supposed to be getting for West Wilson?
So we meet with them monthly. I have not met with them this month. We're trying to wait till after this bid. We've pushed the meeting back. It's reimbursement-based, so they still tell us they're going to reimburse us a certain dollar amount, a certain percentage over, you know, what the insurance covered. So that's still our plan. But we won't know the dollar amount until we bid, until we bid West Wilson and bid everything that goes with it. So we still anticipate that being in play there, but I can't give you a dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gentry?
Yeah, on your new students, are they mainly in elementary, middle, or high? Or are they just spread throughout?
They're really spread throughout. We had a family the other day that came and met with us. I want to say they were from New York or California or somewhere, but they had five kids. So they were spread out from high school all the way down to elementary. I think in that situation, they were looking at Gladeville Community, but they had somebody in Gladeville Elementary, Gladeville Middle, and Wilson Central, so.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Your advisor, the food costs went up $1 million this year. Is that county, is that above the grants that you got from the federal government for the free lunches?
No, I'm saying that's just the food cost. So they did raise our reimbursement rates. I mean, we can cover that. I'm just saying, just to kind of emphasize how inflation has hurt us there. I'll be bringing a budget amendment that books revenue, but it'll also book an additional almost $1 million in food costs, yeah.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes, sir. I noticed in the minutes that I have recommended twice within this last month that we have a meeting with the education budget and the school board meeting regarding the purchase of the land. There's been a lot of conversation and talk about that. And I think I said in here, within the next seven days, and that's fallen by the wayside. So I know we have, I don't know if we have any school board members in the audience, but the education committee is in the room, as well as the budget committee. And I would still like to see if we can't all sit down together at some point and make this happen. Though the education committee nor the county commission do anything about it, but fund it, but I do think that we should listen to what the public have to say.
So our goal, Commissioner Stafford, was to let them get the due diligence work done. So when we met, we would understand what was actually out there. Instead of talking over and over again about everybody's thoughts or complaints, they're going to bring that before us. And when they do, when they have that together, which is about a six-week process, we will have a work session with that and invite everybody.
Wonderful, thank you.
Welcome. Commissioner Walker?
As started, I will add, our due diligence work has started.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, I got a slide deck, a PowerPoint of the original BEP when it came out from the state. I spoke with Senator Potey on his way down to the state senate this morning. He didn't have really any updates. I would like Mayor Jennings, if you could draft a letter to our comptroller. I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a snapshot. I'd like to see all school districts for the last 10 years. I want to see the BEP funding for the last 10 years for all school districts across the state. I've asked for this from one of our representatives, and I think it'd be good for us to see that because we're the second richest per capita county in the state, and we kept getting lower and lower diminishing returns on our BEP funding. And we all know that we have a lot of schools to build, $450 million in the next five years. It's very difficult to put all this on the back of the taxpayers.
Any other questions?
We could get that drafted. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Smith? Report from the Public Works Committee. Commissioner Weathers?
Chairman, the Public Works Committee met February 22nd. Here at the courthouse, the minutes are in your packet. I know that they wish they did.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Committee reports here, Ag Center Management. Commissioner Scruggs?
Ag Center Management met March 3rd, 2022. Packet be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
Animal Control met in regular session on Thursday, March 10th, 5 o'clock, upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard?
No report.
Broadband, cable tax, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, we've got two sets of minutes in here, February 23rd and March 9th. And also on your desk, you will see a back tax report dated today from our tax attorney that looks like we went from $1 million in all four taxing authorities down to a total of $93,000 over the last four years. And you see at the bottom, closing paragraph, there are 35 parcels of real property which are looking like they're going to move towards a tax sale. Thank you. I move these be accepted and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Health and Development Tourism, Commissioner Vanatta?
Yes, Development Tourism met on Monday, February 28th. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Vanatta?
Yes, I put, thanks to Sandra Doughty, I put a report on your desk
Yes, I put, thanks to Sandra Doughty, I put a report on your desk, shows the comparison of the hotel motel tax from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. July through January, we are up seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents in the hotel motel tax for Wilson County.
Nice, very nice. Thank you. Ethics, Commissioner Ash? Finance, Commissioner Gentry?
Finance Committee met March ninth, five-thirty in the conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I make a motion, received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
No report.
There is one.
There is one?
Yes.
The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed. Met on February the twenty-third.
Hear your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
No.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
Sir?
A few days ago, but there's nothing in the packet. They'll be in next month's packet.
Yes, sir. Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
No report.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
We met March ninth, no quorum, so no minutes. Thank you.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board met March fourth. Your packet, February twenty-second filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Director report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
Hopefully, I'll be brief, just to go over some of the highlights from the summary financial reporting, your packet. As I mentioned during the budget committee meeting, you've received ninety-two percent of your budgeted property tax for the year. There's usually another fairly good chunk that comes in, excuse me, in March, so that will probably, you know, we're, we're in good shape there. You've already, as Ms. Vanata just pointed out, if you look at the hotel motel tax and the general fund, you've budgeted seven hundred and twenty-five thousand in the general fund and received a little over eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. On the second page, the register of deeds has already turned in more than what we budgeted for her office. She's already turned in a million, one thirty-six. We budgeted a million, and the trustee is, turned in ninety-five percent of what we budgeted for their excess fees. So revenues are looking good. Like I told you, you know, you're at twelve point seven million right now in the black for the year. Remember that March usually is pretty good, April, May, and June, July, they get a lot slower, so you'll see that number go down, 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 down. Other thing that I would just like to point out, we keep talking about the Rural Debt Service Fund, and this is a, a direct result of the change in sales tax where it's now sent to the locality where it shipped, internet sales. So you're looking overall on page seven, at the bottom of the page, we had budgeted three point two million in local option sales tax in that fund. You've already received four point four million, you know, eight months into the year. So that continues to be strong. Adequate facilities tax on the net pay, on the next page, you know, you've already received more than what we budgeted. We budgeted three and a half million. We're at three million five hundred and twenty-two thousand. We, we continue to stay kind of conservative on that, but, you know, I think that's probably the right thing to do. You don't know when or if it might slow up. So from that standpoint, again, I'm, I'm pleased with what I see going on there right now. Budget worksheets are out, in addition to our request for the five-year capital plan and the needs list. We've requested those be turned back into the finance office by April twenty-second. I am working on scheduling an audit committee meeting. The auditors are here doing preliminary work, so I'm thinking maybe next Tuesday or Thursday?
We're going to schedule for next Thursday at five o'clock.
Next, next Thursday at five o'clock will be the audit committee meeting. Somebody from the comptroller's office will be there. And we've also been working on links to some of the performance metrics. I don't know if everybody was here back when we, when we did the last service efforts and accomplishments report, but we've been trying to work on something like that in ClearGov, and hopefully we'll have some of those performance metrics available soon to go online. So that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Report be received and filed.
Mr. Gentry?
Yeah, Aaron, on our fund balance, it started at twenty, now we're down at fifteen. Well, some of that would be reimbursed, right?
Yeah, a big chunk. Three, yeah, like three point five, three point five million.
Seven for that radio stuff?
Yeah, and the money for the radio, yep. So, so, yeah, you're looking at quite a bit of that being reimbursed and, and probably quite soon.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, thank you for your report.
Yes, sir.
Really quick, I know that we've got the pay study in.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I'm very passionate about the pay study.
Understood, sir.
How soon can every department head can get the pay study?
Every pay, every department should have the pay study. So let me answer the question in two ways. My work with the pay study will be done by Wednesday. At that point in time, they are supposed to, they being the people doing the pay study, are supposed to already be scheduling meetings for next week with the sheriff first, sheriff goes first, and then with all other departments. So by this time next week, they should have meetings scheduled and be out visiting with everybody to get the final numbers together.
One more question. Nobody needs to file an open, an open works request, right? For any pay study, correct?
I don't think so, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Maynard? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met twice, once on February the twenty-eighth, and again on March the tenth. Both sets of minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Resolutions?
Resolution twenty-two dash three dash three, to accept the bid of two thirty-one car sales in the amount of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to purchase the Old Road Commission property on Oak Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-two yes, one no, one abstaining. Resolution passes? Resolution twenty-two dash three dash four, to establish the rate of compensation for Wilson County Attorney.
Second. Any discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote?
You know we gave WEMA.
Please cast your vote.
How much is it? Hundred and two.
Commissioner Weathers and Commissioner Stafford? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Only four yes.
Twenty-four yes, no abst, one abst.
Resolution twenty-two dash three dash five, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions to make an additional appropriation from Animal Control Reserve Fund to Animal Control.
Motion.
Got a motion, a second? Now discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gentry? Mr. Smith? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, and one abst.
Resolution twenty-two dash three dash six, to assure Wilson County Promotions, one million dollars advance that will be reimbursed from funds received from the state of Tennessee.
Motion approved.
Discussion now, Commissioner Vanata?
Yes, I would like to request that this resolution be deferred for thirty days. There's a lot of discussion. I've had a lot of calls from several commissioners. I've had calls from the public on this matter. There's just a lot going on at the Ag Center right now, trying to build the Tennessee Made Products Building, trying to build the Agricultural Learning Center. There's some other buildings and pads that Wilson County Promotions is willing to pour. I'm not saying that anything wrong with it, I'm just saying I think there needs to be more discussion before we do this. I don't know how many commissioners in here have had the opportunity to read this. I know one million dollars was supposed to go to Mr. Tim Edwards, and it's my understanding that that's been delayed. And according to the contract, and Mayor, thank you for speaking up, I think it was the last ag management, maybe the one before, that you said that you wanted to be good stewards of this money, and I appreciate you stating that. I just think it needs to have some discussion with the county commission, with the ag management, and Wilson County Promotions.
Second.
Commissioner Patton?
I'm in kind of agreement with that. I mean, this doesn't really detail as much as the meetings that we've been doing. We've been having three-hour meetings, two and a half and three-hour meetings over some of this stuff, and this looks like it's, you know, would take five minutes. I mean, I just don't know that.
This is a resolution that came out of the Budget Committee. That's what they said that night, and that's what I.
Well, I know.
I don't know anything about the three-hour meetings. That's what they approved that night.
Ag management, no, ag management meetings. And there's been such discussion in there, I just want to be sure that everything is in there that we've been discussing without any kind of, without leaving anything out.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Real quick, Ms. Vanata, do you want finance to be involved with this?
Finance and budget, I think all should be involved.
Okay, was there any, is there any resolutions that we need to pull back from like years ago involving this?
Probably, I can go back and look. I've got the minutes back, I've gone through the minutes back in April of two thousand twenty-one, and there's been lots of discussion, like Commissioner Patton said, back and forth. And it's gotten to the point, there's so much involvement out there that it's gotten very confusing. And at the latest meeting, like I said, we only had five commissioners there. I know they were all busy, you know, you can't make all the meetings, I understand that. But it just seems like it's just back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I think all the commissioners should have the opportunity to figure all the facts, because we're looking at five million dollars from the state. And by, by the way, has that already, has the county received that five million?
Five million's been in our account, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you. And the proposal is that we'll get another nine and a half million. Well, we want to make sure we get that, and we want to make sure we spend it all properly. So I just think all the commissioners should be aware of what's going on and have some input in it, because it was reported that it was sold to the state that the Ag Learning Center was very important for this project, and they were to get a million dollars, and of course, we want them to have it, we want Wilson County Promotions to get the rest of theirs too. But we've got to answer to the taxpayers of Wilson County, like Commissioner Jones always says, and that's true. So in order to answer to them, we've got to know basically everything that's going on. And I'm not saying anything that they're not being open about it, I just think there needs to be more discussion about it.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes, sir. I think we had great discussion about this in the Budget Committee meeting, exactly. We talked for quite a bit, and everybody said what they wanted in and out of it. I don't know if some of the people from whatever committee she's talking about, they weren't there at that time, but we went in great detail and great length about it at our budget meeting, so I don't know why they would want to have another meeting about it. As Mr., as Attorney Jennings said, I mean, we went in great, great length, great detail. I think we talked for, talked about this longer than we did pretty much any other thing that was in the Budget Committee. So I don't see no reason why we shouldn't be able to go, go ahead and move forward with it. We was all but guaranteed that the money was there, and how the money was going to be dispersed, and how the money was going to be returned back to us. We are responsible to the taxpayers, our, our respect that greatly, but however, we were already told how it's going to be returned back to us.
Mr. Glover?
What's your, what's your thoughts on it, Mayor?
Well, just, I can give you the overview of it, you can do whatever you decide you want to do. The five million was given to us by the state and transferred to go to the Wilson County Promotions, and they spent things on our grounds, and that's how we get involved in it. Out of that five million, three point five of it goes to the Tennessee Made Product Building that will house all of the awards there. Three thousand, three hundred thousand went to the cattle paddles for crowd control, two hundred thousand went to the bathroom, which is already built out there, and then a million dollars went to the Agricultural Learning Center. Out of that designated first five million. In the meantime, okay, Mr. Edwards, which is in our building right now today, came to the Ag Committee and said, hey, I'm okay transferring our million over there to go ahead and finish the Tennessee Made Product Building with the guarantee that I get a million back out of the next nine and a half million that's coming to us. So that's what came in before the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee said in this resolution, said, well, we could make that deal, but here, here's, here's the kicker that goes with it. Wilson County Promotions said, you know, we're not for sure if a Tennessee Made Product Building will be made. So they worked with Mr. Smith back there to say, hey, we could have Plan B. And Plan B was to build three or four buildings, and Promotions said that money, money coming from the state would not be here until July. So they wanted to get and borrow a loan from the bank that Promotions goes on the hook for themselves, and they sent this resolution to you because the money from the state comes to us before it goes anywhere else. So in that case, the Budget Committee said, well, we will do this based on these conditions. We're not going to pay interest. We want to make sure that Mr. Edwards gets his million back, and we want to make sure that we get the nine and a half million, and that the Tennessee Made Product Building is finished before they pay the loan back to Promotions. So that's what came to the Budget Committee to ask for that. They were wanting to borrow the money ahead of time to build some buildings, and they went, they couldn't wait. That, that money coming from the state will not get to us until mid-July at best. So that, that's what's, that's what's on the table for you, and it's up to you, whatever you want to do, but that's, that's kind of where it's at.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I kind of look at this as an interlocal agreement between the Tennessee State Fair and the Wilson County Fair. Much like we have interlocal agreements within our county, this is between the county and the state, and they give us money, belongs to the county. I would think we entertain this just like the budget process. Have a three- or five-year plan in the budget process, and it's on paper, we know where all the money is. Once you have that, it's part of the budget process, we all know what's going on. And then if something gets adjusted, it's just an adjustment in the plan, but we all know what the plan is.
Commissioner McFarland?
What this is saying is we are the guarantor for the Wilson County Promotions loan at the bank, is that correct?
No, sir. They're just saying that if that money.
They defiled on the loan, we have to pay it, is that what it's saying?
No, sir. They're just saying if we get the money in, that we're going to make sure that these things happen first before they get their money back. You're trying to make sure that the Agricultural Learning Center gets their million, the Tennessee Made Product Building is built, you're going to pay no interest on it, that's, and, and if you get the nine and a half million. If we don't get the nine and a half million, they're just on the hook for the, whatever money they borrowed.
We're not on the hook for that.
We are not on the hook for any money, no, sir. And we control where the money goes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, I'll call for questions. Second of all, I want to say, that's if we get nine and a half. I want to make sure everybody knows that. It's if we get nine and a half, right? Okay, call for questions.
And if you don't get the, if you don't get the money, they're the one on the hook for the loan.
Sure.
We're not. I have five, I have five in the hopper on the call for the questions. I'll answer those, and then I'll be done.
Commissioner Patton?
That's what I needed to know, that the way, you know, that we're not on the hook for any money, it's all them, and that Mr. Edwards will get his money, and the Tennessee Made Building complete, just, just exactly, these four things are done, and, and we're not on the hook for any money, okay.
Mr. Kurtz?
Mayor, just want to make sure, I understand that the Tennessee Made Building's going to be completed with the amount of funding that, that is available right now. The million dollars is for a separate building, is that correct?
Yes.
The million dollars that's being borrowed is for a second separate building, it's not for the Tennessee Made Building.
Say again now? Say it one more time. I'm, I'm with you.
So.
You talking about the million that?
The million dollars that.
Mr. Tim offered to transfer?
No, that's being borrowed.
No. Oh, this being borrowed, that's for three other buildings.
And just reading in the minutes, that, that other buildings was to accommodate 4H and FFA, which is my understanding was one of the values of the Agricultural Learning Center was to accommodate FFA and 4H, and why the state was so interested. And I'm not saying we don't need this building to display at the fair and other things, if, if that's the purpose, but I don't know what we're going to do with the building the other times.
I'm going to, I'm going to help you on that one. Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry, Mr. Quentin, would you answer that? I know this was something that you and the Promotions worked up as Plan B in case the Tennessee Made Product Building wasn't done. Can you explain to them what those buildings are and how you will use them afterwards?
Oh, there's, is this one working? First off, there is a five-year plan that's turned into where we'll be getting money supposedly if everything goes well. But the five million, the mayor's already said it's there. What's going to happen is if y'all delay this, Wilson Promotions is on the hook. So if the money don't come through, it's their problem. But what the deal is, the Tennessee Building has got behind to where the, everybody knows it's not going to be ready for the fair this year. And according to the contract we had when Tennessee State Fair was moved to the James E. Ward Ag Center, was we've got to be able to accommodate these other counties with their products that they're going to compete with. So these three buildings here are way smaller than the Tennessee Building, and they're buildings that'll be utilized the other 11 months beside the fair. One will be going on the pad where the Cracker Barrel was supposed to go. So that pad is already there. So what the deal is, is if all of you knows how this building thing is going, if we don't go on and get a move on it, then these, there's three smaller buildings that's going to be utilized for the 4-H, FFA products and so forth. We're going to be another year that we're going to be in a mess on it out there. So what they're wanting to do is go on and Promotions will borrow the money. If the state don't end up, and we don't get the other nine and a half million, Promotions is just up the creek. But we need to get that fine going because if we don't, we won't even get these smaller buildings ready for the fair in August. So-
Mr. Kurtz, is that-
Maybe I was mistaken. It's just for a display for the fair. It's not like the home of the 4-H or FFA.
Oh, no. It's just that building, the one building will be there close to Fillers Grove. If y'all know where the Venture Barn is, it'll be in between it and the White Fence, Fillers Grove is where the 4-H, FFA building will be. The other building will be back on the pad, and then the other one's a picnic pavilion that'll be on the back, back towards where the Sheriff's Compound is. But that's the three that we need desperately to get us through till that Tennessee Building is completed. But those three buildings will be utilized. The one on the Cracker Barrel pad is going to be turned into a music museum there inside to grow. Anybody else got any other questions on it? John? They, they've done put them out to bid because all this stuff has got to be bid. So it's been put out to bid, and we've had three or four different people look at the buildings. You know, it's, the one on the Cracker Barrel pad will be enclosed, and the one of the 4-H, FFA will be enclosed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Did I help you? Yes, sir. Okay. Got two more. Commissioner Breeze?
Do you know where in the process the fiscal note is for this nine and a half million that we're talking about, the state level?
Governors presented it, and the legislators will have to pass their budget. And then once they do that, then we'll see it after that.
Okay. But it's already been introduced by the governor and actually added to the budget, so it's gone through that far. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I was prepared to vote for this just because it appeared that Promotions was on the hook, not the county. If we didn't get the money, they were going to do it. And the cost of money is going up as we speak, and the building season's going away as we speak. So if we don't do this, we're going to run out of both, and it's probably going to cost more later anyway. So I was going to vote for it.
Last one. Commissioner Van Adam?
I guess my only concern, I don't know how many of you have seen the grant contract, but I have the grant contract. And on page two, the last paragraph, this is what brought this up to my attention and some other people. It says termination for cause. And if somebody can explain this to me, I'd be happy to drop, pull my motion. If the grantee fails to properly perform its obligation under this grant contract in a timely or proper manner, or if the grantee violates any terms of this grant contract, the state shall have the right to immediately terminate the grant contract and withhold payments. I read that because Mr. Edwards back here, it was guaranteed a million dollars for the Ag Learning Center. And it's been quoted several, he's been quoted and it's been quoted several times in the minutes that that was one of the main reasons that the state went with this project because of that Ag Learning Center. And I just don't want to see us lose that, the state come back on it if that's not fulfilled.
Got you. Okay. That is a guarantee from Shannon with the state that we could move the money and guarantee the other with a resolution that you're proposing to not. So that-
This contract has been changed then?
No, that contract is correct, but we asked her permission about moving the million. She said the money is in your hands, and if your county commission wants to do that, as long as you have a resolution backing up, she's good. And it's good for three years on that. So we've had the call for question. We have, sir?
It's on the motion to defer.
Motion to defer. I got a motion and a second to defer it. And so now we're ready to vote on that. If you'd like to defer this for 30 days, you'll vote yes. If you don't want to vote it, if you don't want to defer it for 30 days, vote no. But you're voting to defer this resolution for 30 days for more clarity. And we are-
I got it.
Everybody clear on what we're voting? Motion to defer? Excuse me?
Yes, you want to defer.
Okay. So if you want to defer this resolution, vote yes. If you don't want to vote, if you don't want to defer it, you can vote no, and then we'll vote on the resolution. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Ash?
Bishop.
And Commissioner Bishop.
I don't know. Yes, I guess.
All hearts and minds still good with your vote? Please record.
Nine, yes, fifteen, no, one absent.
So it does not now move to, we'll go back to the original resolution as it was. Any discussion on it before we go any further? If not, please cast your vote for the resolutions at hand. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Marlowe? Can you give me a? All hearts and minds good with your vote now? Please record.
Twenty-one, yes, three, no, one absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three, no, resolution passes. Move forward, sir.
Resolution 22-3-7, approving a lease agreement for the Wilson County Building Inspector's Office.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. No, my bad. Forget that. Yeah. Are you ready to vote? I know. My bad.
It's always about money.
It's got to be about money. My bad. Commissioner Bernard? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes. And one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-8, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-9, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, I don't think. Got it. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Walker? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-10, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Any discussion? See, if none. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner McFarland? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-11, amend the budget and appropriations resolution for line item transfers into WEMA.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-12, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion.
Motion and second? Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? Commissioner Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-13, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriations from General Fund into Sheriff's Department.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Van Adam? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-14, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? And Commissioner Weathers? Mr. Costley?
What's up, Costley?
Costley, bud.
Go ahead and push it, Costley.
Okay.
You got to push it.
Vote. You got to vote, Costley.
Yeah.
We're waiting on you.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four, yes.
One absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-15, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-16, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an appropriation from Sanitation Fund 207 into landfill.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-17, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an additional appropriation from General Fund into County Clerk.
Motion.
Here's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-18, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an appropriation from Capital Projects Fund for paving and grading at the Expo Center parking area.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four present, one absent. Yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-19, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an appropriation from Capital Projects Funds for sale of the old adult high school.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
You vote no.
Commissioner Ash? Commissioner Stafford? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-20, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an appropriation from the Ag Center Fund 124 into Ag Center.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See, if none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four, yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 22-3-22, 21, excuse me, to amend Rule 47N of the Rules of Order.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. Needs two-thirds vote to make this one pass. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, this was rewritten as a result of renaming the committee Broadband Access Cable TV Backed Act. So it was rewritten by the committee, that same committee. I just want to let you know, it's not a new rule, it's just a writing of the definition of the new committee.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Any opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous.
Resolution 22-3-22, to approve the attached franchise agreement with Comcast of Nashville LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ash?
I guess a question for our attorney. I read that contract. I didn't pass contract law. Did you write that for, is that-
I did not. It is written by the Comcast people based on the contract.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Uh, Mike, sorry.
Do what now?
That's why I was, couldn't hear you.
That contract was drafted by the Comcast lawyers to start with. It's working off a state contract that many cable providers are using. Then the Cable TV Committee met four or five times, made some suggestive changes. We went back and forth, and that's finally what we settled.
It's a very complicated contract.
It certainly is. And it, as you might imagine, the way the cable TV law is written, it favors the providers. And, you know, if we didn't do what the committee did, and they did a good job getting some things in there, but if they didn't, they would've just gone to the state with the state contract.
Are you're good with it?
I am.
Mr. Walker?
I'd like to echo what our attorney, Mike Jennings, said. This is a long, drawn-out process, and I'm familiar with Comcast from across the country. I got a friend that did this for three years. It took us nine months. I can tell you, Commissioner Franklin, myself, everybody on the Cable TV Committee, we turned this. We had the gal from Comcast read every single line one night. We're there till, we're bleeding our eyes. It was a very painful process. We've got a great franchise agreement right now. I'm pleased, and I highly recommend that we vote for this and pass it.
Mr. McFarland?
I want to address new business, please. New business, yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, about the Comcast cable agreement, the highlight of it possibly for the commission is it's going to extend our PEG channel access to the greatest portion of Wilson County, even though it's off-site. It's going to be an agreement with those guys to allow anybody that's got Comcast basically in the county to get our PEG channel. And that's a pretty good deal. That's what we worked for, for nine months to get, mainly.
See, if no other discussion, are you ready to vote? Or?
Yeah, what Bobby Franklin's saying, you may not be aware, but Comcast, we have several providers out there. We get franchise money back to the county. We get 5% back from all the providers. Comcast has got the largest market share in the county. So once we get this and the PEG channel's in, like Mr. Franklin said, that's going to turn on the PEG channel for the largest portion of our county.
Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three, yes, one, no, one absent.
Resolution passes. Any old business to come before the body? Any new business? Commissioner McFarland?
Thank you very much, Mayor, fellow commissioners. I sent an email out last week, and I want to just clarify it. A week ago Friday, regarding schools, a week ago Friday, I went downstairs and pulled plats on properties in the Lagarto area, and I have with me 11 different tracts of land, and they vary from 80 acres to almost 300 acres. Many of them have good roads, sites on them. Many of them have good roads, sites on them. Last Monday, a week ago today, at lunch, and I got a share that Mr. Luttrell bought my lunch then, and I delivered those 11 sites to him. So if the school's going to consider due diligence on the site that they're looking at, I would like also them to perhaps hire a realtor or somebody to go look at these other sites, because there may be one better. You need water, you need lots of oil, and you need good roads, and I think the ones that there, it's lacking, but there are some that are good. Be glad to make copies for anybody here, but I would like very much for them to take the flats that I delivered to Mr. Luttrell and consider those, at least get somebody to look at them also. That's my request. I'll be asking about it in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
I've got a guest here tonight, if he would please approach the back podium. It's a teacher at Mount Juliet High School. We've got great teachers here and a great student, so I'm going to give him a couple minutes real quick. He teaches criminal justice at Mount Juliet High School, and he's got an outstanding student with him, 15-years-old, so I'm going to give the floor just for a couple minutes to Mr. Tyrone White.
Thank you for walking and welcoming us. We'll be very brief, because I know it's late. I teach criminal justice at Mount Juliet High School. It's my third year. We've had the distinction of having a student last year represent the state of Tennessee at the FBI Academy in Quantico. This year, we were fortunate again that we were able to have two students who were selected even to be interviewed, and Ari Empande is here. One of the things that really have made him stand out is his initiative that started three years ago to raise awareness and prevention of domestic violence. So I'm just going to have him talk to you about this. It's a statewide initiative that we're pushing for. He'll share that with you. We'll be meeting with the criminal, the law enforcement committee soon to push this forward, so I'll have him share a few words.
Yes, so while on the topic of our domestic violence problem, I feel like there's a statistic that must be brought to light, and this statistic is that Tennessee ranks 10th in the nation for the rate at which men kill women. And I feel like this really shows that we have a problem here in Tennessee. Now, the first step to solve this problem is to create discussion about it. For this reason, I have started an initiative in the Mount Juliet High School Criminal Justice Club, where we are addressing this problem by spreading awareness about it by social media and gathering, so people will be talking about it, and it will be on people's minds, because this is a problem that must be addressed. On top of this, we have also collected donations for domestic violence shelters, so we can show them that we support them and what they are doing. But I really appreciate all of you hearing us out today, and thank you.
Commissioner Kurtz?
I had a question of Mr. McFarland. I'm curious, are those properties currently listed for sale, or we would be prospecting?
No, they're not listed for sale. Two people, I don't know, didn't know anything about RFP. They're out there, they're 80 to 300 acres, so I'd like somebody to look. I talked to Mayor Jennings, he says, can we negotiate on it? In fact, can they negotiate? You know, we don't have anything to do with it. Yeah, they can negotiate. They legally can negotiate. If I want to buy your farm, you buy mine. So at least somebody go look at them and talk to them. That's all I'm asking. There may be some better, and it may not be selling, there may be some for sale.
Anything else to come before this body?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Tom's back there, and he hadn't said much tonight, but he has a notice of public meetings starting tomorrow night, right time. Tomorrow night in Glavel, next Tuesday night in Watertown, West Elementary, the following Tuesday night in Carroll Oakley.